Call to order. Thank you. Majority Leader, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Today is December 2nd, 2020. This is the City of Utica Common Council Pre-Caucus Meeting. We have an attendance, everyone except for Councilman LaMedico. And as discussed before this, councilperson Friend does have a question for Councilor Hartnett, so I'd like to give her the opportunity to ask her that question right now.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hartnett, are you there? Perhaps she can't hear me.
I can hear you. So Ms. Hartnett, there she goes. Hang on. All right.
She? Okay. Ms. Hartnett, can you hear me? She's not muted. Okay, we could perhaps find time towards the end of this first meeting.
Yeah, let's get started.
Yeah. That's fine.
All right. So we are going to get started with local law number six and local law number seven, the ones that were introduced. Starting with six, it is a local law that's sponsored by five council members, Councilmember Miola, Councilmember Burmester, Councilperson McNeil, Councilmember LaMedico, and Councilmember DeBrango. This local law is on the table. Well, it's in front of us. Is there any discussion regarding this particular one?
Yes, this is Councilman Beatrice.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank all you guys for giving me the opportunity to be the sponsor of this bill. I appreciate you coming to me with it. Unfortunately, at this time with the section two, as far as the part, the local law that applies, officials that were elected were reelected in 2017. I cannot go on and sponsor that. That's why I basically put my legislation in tonight, which was my legislation to start with, that I was going to bring out in February. So I brought that out tonight, and that's the only, I just wanted to say that to you. But thank you guys for thinking of me, and I just, I can't go along with that last line.
I'd like to say something quick, if that's okay. So just regarding that, Councilman Beatrice, the reason why we did reach out to you is that we were, we were hoping that there was a way that we could find a better way to write up the local law to make it so that it kind of described what you were trying to do without excluding certain members. We feel that local law number six kind of encompasses everybody, so it's not a selective one, and feel that it's just a better law altogether.
Okay, so let me, let me explain something to you also. I wasn't trying, what I tried to do had nothing to do with any individual people. It was, like I stated last week, what I wanted to do was give everybody the chance to run the one time, the way the mayor got to run. And then we were going to bring it back to a referendum to the people. Okay? That's all I wanted to do. It had nothing to do with benefiting anybody else or anything like that. So that's, that's just where I'm going with it. I wanted, I wanted the people to have a chance, the ones that were able to run in 2021, a chance to run. And then we were on an even page, and I was going to hold Councilman Miola, Councilman DeBrango, they all spoke that we're going to bring it to a referendum to the people once it got turned back. So that's just what I want to do, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm kind of done with the discussion, and you guys got the votes to do what you have to do. That's fine. I'd like to bring mine out when the time comes also. Thank you.
Just one more thing, just to add to that. It's not, yours is not bringing it to an even playing field. If you were to bring it to an even playing field, you would do, you would either bring it back to eight years and everyone only being able to run for eight years, or you would do what the proposed local law number six would do. So what yours would essentially propose would be that certain members would only be able to run for eight years, certain members would only be able to run for potentially 10 years, and certain members would only actually be able to run for 12 years. I just wanted to put that on the record, just because it's something that I did discuss with you in, in private, and it's something that I wanted to put out there on the record, just because I didn't feel like you kind of understood what that actually did, what yours did. So that's all I have to say.
Madam President, can you?
Can I chime in?
Absolutely.
I think, I think the, I think the other thing that we have to, that, that my question is, while, I mean, it may perceive that Councilman Beatrice's legislation is uneven, but it really is just looking at the, at the time where the legislation comes to be effective. Now, that may mean that some people may not have the same number of tenure as other elected officials may have had, but I feel like if the truth be told, all of it is a gracious gesture, given the fact that the real election, to me, given the chatter, is, is about the Controller's office. I mean, if we, if we were to be real. And I think, I think if, if the Controller wasn't up for reelection and the effective date didn't have to be set for that to make sure that we had a Controller in place, I, I, I'm confused as to the conversation about the difference between certain councilpeople getting a certain set of time and other people getting a certain set of time. So with that, I do, I do agree that it comes down to, as the Majority Leader has said, either we just turn it back to what it was with eight years, right? Or, or we, in my opinion, we just pass a law that is effective, they, and, and kind of say, well, this, I mean, that's how the cookie crumbles. I mean, and I know it may, it, you know, I'm not affected by it, but I mean, I think this is a horrible situation anywhere around, given what the council did previously, and, and the timing of this legislation now places, you know, the fact that things are going to have to go the way that they go. That's just my thought.
I'd like to speak when I have a chance.
Absolutely. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that we're all, because there were three different pieces of legislation, and I want to make sure that we're all kind of, that I'm following all the different twists and turns. So I'm looking at number six now, and this is the one sponsored by Miola and others, Miola, Burmester, et cetera. And I'm looking at section two, that's what Councilman Beatrice was referring to a minute ago. So this would mean, if we passed this one as it stands now, then Maria, Jack, and Mark would each be able to serve 12 years, and the same with Bill Morehouse and with President Gullim, right?
All of the people who are essentially.
All the people who are what? No, okay, all the people who are.
Well, if you're splitting hairs, this would actually not include me, but I've already spoken my piece on that. I just, I'm just putting that out there. Yeah, because I was not elected, I was not elected in 2017. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that technically this is written, I don't believe that your statement is all 100%.
You are speaking over Maria. She's in the middle of a sentence.
Okay, I'm just.
I was actually cutting you off, and then I stopped myself because I cut you off, so I'm, I'm very sorry. You continue with which.
But I wanted to hear what you had to say. So, all right. So it seems to me that, so Maria, Jack, Mark, would be able to serve 12 years. But then, so Bob, Joe, Celeste, Delvin, and Frank DeBrango, and Frank Miola would each still serve eight. Is that correct? So we're still looking at kind of a two-tiered system for the members of the council, and for the moment, we can even put aside the president and the controller. We're looking at a two-tiered system. And it seems to me that. Yeah, go ahead.
The thought process behind it was the fact that after voting for the term extension, those people and the people who are currently still on the council were then reelected, therefore the people in that election made their decision whether or not they wanted the person to be back in office after that vote.
But some of those people voted for the extension, and some of those people voted against the extension of term limits. Councilman Williamson voted against the extension of term limits, right? So I'm not sure why that's, I don't know that what we can read from the fact that those, that all three of those people were reelected. I don't know how much we can read into from that, that the voters, I don't know. It's a, that's a very weird way to lay an interpretation over that election.
I, I.
Madam President.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Because the truth is, it could be, it could be the question, not that, not that they agreed with the terms or extension, it could be that they didn't want Mike Gentile, Haka Grobeke, and the rest of those folks running to be in office. So that's how it could have been read.
Right. We don't know how to read it. It's awfully hard to read.
Well, I think, can I speak, Madam President?
Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Madam President.
What's that? What's that?
I think we overspoke. I don't think it's Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm, I'm a little under the weather here. So listen, listen, from the beginning, when I wanted to bring this up, all I wanted to do, okay, was give the people a chance to run in 2021. And then we all sat and said, last week, we were going to bring it to a referendum and let the people vote. If we bring this to 2021, it would have been simple in February. We wouldn't have been having this discussion. It would have been over and done with, okay? That's what was talked about. That's what I was planning on doing. And the only reason I wanted to do that was because the person who was the main culprit in this term limits, we went over this last week, was about the mayor. In 1992, it was about Mayor, Mayor Lapola, and in 2017, it was about extending Mayor Palmeri. Nobody, so that's, that's all I wanted to do, and it's a simple thing. The people who have one chance to run again, they run again. After that, we're all on the even keel, everything goes to eight years. And, and when we decide, we have until, I believe Councilman Miola says we have until August to get something together on the ballot to bring it to the people. I, I think that's our best solution, but that's only, that's only my opinion, and, and I just want to make that clear. It's not about taking care of this one or taking care of that one. It's about, the mayor had the chance to run. The controller should have the chance to run, and the guys that are running in 17, or in, I'm sorry, in 21 should have the chance. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the only councilperson in 2021 that this pertains to is Councilman Williamson. Because Councilman LaMonaco was, they're explaining to me, was appointed, so he could still run in 2021 regardless. So I think we're really overthinking this whole thing. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. So in front of us, we have three local laws, two of them that are sponsored by one member, and one of them that's sponsored by five. Do we want more discussion, or is it?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on local law number six.
Okay.
I think it should be amended. I see the part on the bottom. You can bring that up, Mr. President. It says we're reelected. I think it should be elected, because some of them are first-time runners, and they were elected, they weren't reelected in 2019. And I think that line at section two pertains to the voters of 2019. So whoever was elected in 2019 has the option, if they would like, if, first of all, we all got to win, you know, a two-year term, so they have the option up to 12 years, or if they feel that they want to just stay for eight years, if they get elected every year, because everybody has got to run again and get reelected. I feel that that should be changed to elected, not reelected, amended, and I feel this is a fair, I feel this is very fair, because here's my reasoning on this. The voters knew exactly what they were getting into, exactly what they were voting for in 2019. If they want a common councilperson, a district councilperson. If they didn't want their councilperson, they would, they wouldn't have elected that councilperson. A lot of these voters don't want term limits. It's a 50-50. Some, a lot of them do, and some of them don't. A lot of them don't. So I'm saying it's a 50-50, it's split between the city residents. I got a number of calls on this. Why are you changing the back? Why are you changing the back? I think it's working.
Why are you changing it back? Why are you changing it back? I think it's working. I like my district councilperson. They do the job for me. Every time I call, they get the job done. So why do I have to, why do they have to turn it out now? I said, listen, I'm going to try to put something together so it's fair on both sides. It does not favor Republicans. It does not favor Democrats. It it just, I think, is the right thing to do. We're going to get it back to eight years. So the councilpeople that were elected in 2019 have that option. If they're fortunate enough, and everybody's fortunate enough to get reelected every two years, to max out at 12. And that's that's all it, it's all this is saying. So if you feel, a councilperson feels, I'm only going to, I I only want to max out at eight, God willing, to get elected four times, then that's fine. They can move on. But if another councilperson says, I like, I like what I'm doing, they keep voting me in, I want to stay, I'm doing a good job for my district, I'm proud of my city, I want to stay on till the 10th or 10th year or the 12th year, that's fine as well. I think it's a very fair law. So tha- that's my opinion on it. I will be voting on this law as long as if everybody agrees to the amendment of, instead of reelected, to change to elected. That is all.
Madam President.
May I?
Uh, Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor first.
Yeah, I I again, and I I'm not going to keep going on and on with it. I, uh, I just, either way, from what, uh, Councilman DeBranco said, or the way it's written there, I cannot support this with with that, with section two in there. So that's just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
I just want to point out, given that, um, uh, Councilman DeBranco's suggestion that we change it to elected, that means everybody has 12 years, and so that means that we're not doing anything, right? That's what we already have. We don't need a law to say we have, we can have 12 years. We already have 12 years. So there's no point in passing a law to return, we have 12 years. So.
Councilman Friend.
I'd like to say this. If if you're fortunate enough to get reelected, okay, and I'm fortunate enough to get reelected, let's say we don't. Let's say I get I get beat or you lose. That person, that incoming person that is now elected in 2021 only has eight years. We're moving the law back eight years. I mean, that's.
Okay, I I.
Judge, Judge, can you please clarify that?
Since we are already in the seat, we we have that option. I'm not saying everybody's going to take advantage of it. I mean, I don't even know if I'm going to get reelected next year if I decided to run. But it's just there because the voters knew that it was there in 2019. It was, and you can max out at 12 years. That's all I'm saying. I think it's fair. It doesn't favor.
I follow your logic. I follow your logic. Thank you.
Judge Garamo.
What's your question?
Changing it from reelected to just elected, what does that do? If you could just clarify that for everybody. In section two.
It mean nothing. I I just think it's semantics. I don't think it makes any difference. Because, uh, the people who were, the people, uh, people who ran.
Take Councilman Moody, uh, take Councilman Moody's case. He ran for the first time. He was never reelected. He was elected. Councilman Friend, never reelected. She was elected. So that that's my, that was my take on it, Judge. Sorry to jump in.
Well, when Mr. Moody, if he runs for election in 21, uh, this law doesn't take effect until, uh, 22, so he's not affected by anything. Whatever was in effect at that time is in effect because it doesn't take effect till 22. So it has nothing to do with the next year's election anyway. So it really becomes a little bit academic. And the only thing you identified is the people who, uh, ran in 219, uh, they're, uh, either adversely affected by what you've proposed by other people, not adversely affected by the one that the five councilmen asked you to adopt. That's that's the only difference. So that's for you to choose. As far as I I, the word the people, forget about that word, because if you don't have a referendum, uh, you don't, there is nothing to the people. There's nothing in here that qualifies for a referendum. So, uh, it's just the the same argument that's gone on seven times now. And, uh, quite frankly, that's all it is. You you the, the only time you've had a people vote here was in 219. And the the people who voted knew exactly what they were voting for, because the law was a 2017 law. So the mayor got reelected, had the third term. Uh, I think, uh, who else ran that year? The Controller got elected? Uh, yes, with the mayor. Way back. I'm not the Controller. I mean, the President of the Common Council has the, and the council terms were changed. And that's what happened to people who ran in 219. So that's, uh, that's what happened. And so if you change it back, uh, it's not going to affect the election of 2021 because 2021 isn't affected by this law because it's like that this law's affected 2022 for the very reason that it was proposed. And and all it is here is a difference of opinion about what some people think is fairness and what some people do not. But don't, but to say your argument has something to do with the people, it has nothing to do with the people because the people have already voted in this matter a number of times. And they don't seem to have been very affected by any of it. And of course, one of the arguments that I tried to make clear, but never have been able to, because people always keep saying the word term limits. This is not a term limit law. It's how many time you can run law, which is hard to say and hard for people to digest. Term is how long you serve. Your term is two years. That wasn't going to be changed at all. How many times you run is academic. It could be forever, or it could be for a number of years. Now, it's been for a number of years, uh, for quite a while that it was changed. And now you want to change it back. That's quite all right. But, uh, the secret of all of this, as somebody mentioned, was you have to win. No matter how many, this just give you more times to attempt to win. And the people who ran in 219 thought they were running for a term that was established in 2017. And they were reelected or elected for those terms, including new people. So if they wanted to change them back, fine. But but I I I think that it's just a matter of what your preference is. And I've heard of a couple of different preferences, and I think you're entitled to each one of your own opinion. So, but this is the way, uh, uh, the law was asked to be written, and that's the way it's written. And you either accept that principle and knowing full well what what it does, and, uh, it really doesn't harm anybody. It doesn't even harm the voters because, again, you haven't taken anything from them. They've got to elect you. That's all there is to it. And, uh, I think that has based, that's based upon your performance in the two years prior to your election of whether they think you did or did not do a good job, or they want you in that seat or they don't, or they want your opponent in that seat or they don't. So there's so many factors involved. Lot of this, uh, I think the law is written very clearly and it it and and what it does. It doesn't penalize anybody. And I think the people who ran in 219 for reelection thought they were running on a 2017 law. And I, they were right. They did. And obviously, at the polls, they were also right, uh, with the exception of one person who did not agree with that 2017 law. He's the only one that lost. And, uh, was that because of that? I doubt very much it had anything to do with that at all. So so I don't really think you can use that as, uh, Ms. Friend won the election. Simple as that. He lost. Simple as that. It had nothing to do with this thing, that's for sure. That's about all I could say about it.
Okay. So at this point, any more discussion, or would you like to move on?
No, I I do have a question. I I I want to know how in the world did we get from 10 years to 12 years? Last last meeting, everybody was going down, councilperson of one side to the other and down the other. Uh, you know, talking about, um, that we were not going to support this unless it had, um, the effective date to 2021, right? That would effectively give everybody, those persons who were qualified to one run other time, to run. Um, I thought it was because the Controller was going to be allowed to run, to be clear. Now, this law is bringing us, that people are allowed to run from 10 years to 12 years. And the argument is that because they were reelected, then they were reelected under the conditions, and the public knew that. I agree with the judge. The public was not thinking about, in my opinion, well, I'm voting for this person because of the pretense that, um, a vote for, um, Maria, Jack, Mark is a vote for 12 years. I I I don't I don't think that that we can make that correlation. And I'm confused as to how we got from 10 years last meeting to 12 years now. And then the argument is that that's somewhat fair, or that puts everybody in an equal playing field. What we're saying as a council is we believe in term limits for everybody else but us.
I don't know what you mean by 10 years.
Last year, the the effective date would have allowed, would have allowed, um, people to run one other term, right?
No, essentially, and I believe I spoke over the last meeting. If we were going to make things fair across the board, it would have not done that. It would have only allowed for me to run for eight years. Would have allowed for the other two council members to run for 10 years. It would have allowed for the president and the Controller to run for 12 years.
And so now we're saying, now we're saying everybody gets 12 years.
To put it straight across the board. Correct. That way there, it's not picking and choosing people's political careers. That is, if the people do vote for them, because the people do have to vote you in.
Ma- Madam Majority Leader.
May I?
I think I think he spoke first.
Okay, and I'll and I'll give her a chance to speak after. Again, again, this whole thing, we keep going on and on and on with it. My only goal was, had nothing to do with people. It had to do with anybody who was up for the next election to run, and it would have affected, unfortunately.
For what? What was your reason for allowing people to run for one more term?
Because the mayor got to run his term, and it was all about the mayor. So so.
So then why wouldn't I, in in your, just going with what you're trying to put out there, then why wouldn't, and I'm just fighting for myself here, why wouldn't I be able to be afforded that same opportunity to be able to run for one more term?
You would be able to run. You can run in 2021. You can run. That's that's all. All I was trying, Maria, all I was trying to do, this had nothing to do with anybody, was the people had a chance to run that last time. That's all I wanted to do, and that's all I was going to support. And again, all it was, was to turn it back, and everybody here kept saying, we're going to bring it to a referendum to the people. That's what we were going to do. So it didn't matter anyways. That that's it. That's all I'm trying to say.
No, I I get that. I'm just saying that it just didn't, it didn't sit right, and it was.
Well, it does fit right because.
What you were saying and what you were doing were.
It does fit, it does fit right, because you know, it does fit right, because the only person it would have affected was Mark, because I already told you, Jack, and it had nothing to do with that. But in in 2000, if that's the case, everybody would run in 2021. Then it's over. Then we're back to where we started. The way we're doing it now, we're talking 12 years later. Who's going to have 12 years? Who's going to have eight years? I I can't, I can't support it. I I can't. I'm sorry.
May I?
Yes, you may. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to keep buttin' in.
Absolutely. Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
So according to law number six, as it's written now, and I'm not including, um, uh, Councilman DeBranco's potential amendment, three of the members of the council now would get to serve 12 years, and six of us would get to serve eight years. Now, according to the legislation that I had last time, some would serve eight and some would serve 10. And that's Maria's point, and I think she's right. We end up with this sort of two-tiered system. Can somebody turn off their mic? That's better. Um, so according, you know, I think Maria's right that it doesn't, it's it's an artificial construction to decide that people should get to serve one more by which, um, Jack and Mark would each get to serve, if they wanted to and if they won their elections, 10 years. But Maria, who's in the very same position with them, she voted on term limits, she ran in 2019, she got reelected. Why does she only get eight years and they get 10? She's absolutely right that that's a, that's an unfair construction, and it's arbitrary, right? It's just in order to get the 2021 election to go ahead as it currently would. And, you know, Delvin is absolutely right. We, let's talk about what we're really talking about. This is in order to allow, um, Controller Morehouse to run again in 2021. That's what we're really, that's what some people are really after here. That's very clear. So the legislation that I proposed last, at the last meeting, um, I actually want to change it. I want to go back to making it effective 2021. And then everybody goes, everybody other than the mayor serves the term limits that the voters in 1992 expressly claimed that they wanted. Now, I don't know if I have the support for that. I'm going to stand on the the principle that that's how we ought to proceed anyway. So in terms of my legislation, uh, which is local law, I don't know, number something. But the one that I introduced, it's in the committee pack.
Five.
I want to make the effective date 2021. And I want to serve, I also want to change down at the bottom, person to any elected official. Because I worry that that person thing is a, is a, is an unintentional loophole. So I would just like to make those changes to my legislation. I agree with Joe. The idea of letting everybody go, let some people go all the way out to 12 years at this point is exactly what Joe and I and others believe is wrong. The 1992 referendum made it clear that that was wrong. And we should, we should all suck it up and live with the eight years that the voters, in fact, agreed to back in 1992.
Well, let me say this, Councilwoman. The voters in 2020 weren't even born in 1992, okay? 1992 was cold law. It was to get somebody out of office. And that's all I want to say. You keep up bringing 1992 up. Half of the voters probably aren't even alive, okay? So let's not even talk about that. Let's get it back to eight. Let's be fair about it. Let's pass the legislation number six, uh, law number six, and let's move on. Because this thing has been, ever since I got elected, it's been coming back every year, year in, year out, every year. We tried to get it on the ballot. We couldn't get it on the ballot due to some technicality. Didn't get, didn't get the signatures in time. I doubt if we could try to get it on the ballot this year with the COVID, you know, trying to get, going out there and getting a number of signatures that we need. So I think the right thing to do is just, just let's let's pass this. Let's get it. Let's get it there. And then we'll worry about maybe coming up with some referendum or something to to, uh, you know, limit the, limit the term. I don't know, but I we we got to end this. This has got to end. This has been a haunting, daunting thing for for everybody involved here. And 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 initially, I I don't even think we should be voting on term limits. So maybe, maybe after this, after we pass this, we could, we can get a a something on a referendum that the council shall not vote on turn, on their own term limits at no time. And that would be the only thing that we could, that, you know, that, not, not, uh, like the police residency. We'll be able to, we could change that if we want to. But on their own term limits, maybe we get something on, in a referendum to say, the common council will not vote on their own term limits. It'll be up to the people, something, you have to word it properly, but I I'm sure we can come up with something as a group. But that that's my thought. I'm sorry to butt in, but I just had to, I had to say that.
And I know I think. It's a great place to end it on.
Can I say one really quick thing?
Sure.
I just, really quickly, 28, 28 years is just not that long ago. Frank, you were a voting member of Utica in 1992. So was Jack. So was, uh, Frank Miola. So was Mark Williamson, right? So half the council, so was Bob Burmaster, more than half the council voted in 1992. I don't know how they voted.
Passed away. Okay, so let's let's, let's just say, there's a whole different group of voters. There's two generations of voters out there right now, okay? There're whole, there's a whole different. There're whole, there's a whole different, whole different scenario of voters right now than.
But nine, all my only point is nineteen ninety two is not ancient history. That's my only point. Of course, some of those voters are dead. Some of the people who voted on November third are dead. I mean, but, you know, I I just don't think nineteen ninety two is ancient history. That that was my only point.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Majority Leader McNeil. Um, to sum it all up, we all had different terms in. We all have different years in. Some of us were appointed. Um, most of us have different scenarios to this election. But to make it fair, to make it fair, um to have reduced to eight years beginning of twenty twenty two, and having our colleagues make their decision on their election. You see, Celeste, I don't want to make the decision on my colleagues' term limits. They should make their own. So if you feel you should only run eight years, please, if I feel it, if if Dalvin feels it, they have the right. If my colleagues feel that they should do more because they were elected during a twelve-year um uh the law pertaining to twelve years, they should have their right. You see, the only difference is I don't want to make a decision on their terms. The people should make the decision on their terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miola. Okay, moving on. Yes, thank you. Resolution number one, I spoke with Councilman Burmaster on Frank Shackelfield and the proclamation. We kind of discussed about the fact that we would wait until we could have him there to actually present him the proclamation. So we're actually going to put this in committee this evening. Um, the next one is, it has nothing on the top, so I'm going to assume.
Can I just make a couple of um grammatical fixes to the resolution so that it's all set next time?
I mean, maybe talk with uh Melissa about it, the clerk, and then we can get them fixed up that way.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
All right, so then the next one is a uh ordinance from councilmember Moody. It is an ordinance to require the video surveillance for multiple dwelling apartments. Did you want to discuss this one?
Yes, um I'm sure all of you are aware about that, um the drive-by shooting that happened in plain sight. Uh, well, not plain sight, rather, in plain daylight. Um, I think now is the time for us to really think seriously about surveillance cameras being a requirement for multiple dwelling units, meaning uh uh the not just Roosevelt Housing or MHA, but um um for like housing visions in the area. I've talked to the chief at length about particularly housing visions and other apartment buildings in Corn Hill and other places where, you know, the the police and the mayor have have tried to get um uh these apartment buildings and complexes to have cameras and and kind of upgrade the security, and they just not have done that. I think now we need to move toward requiring it as a city ordinance, that if you have multiple dwellings pursuant to the state law, that you have cameras on it. Um, so this this is just a proposal submitted. I know there will be tweaks. I want to make sure that the judge um um is able to review it. The reason why I'm submitting it tonight is because I want to start that conversation. And so I will be bringing it on the floor, asking for a Thursday waiver to place it in committee if I need to do that. Um, it's not something I'm asking everybody to vote on now, but I want to place in the Public Safety Committee to begin this conversation about I'm requiring a multiple dwelling units to have surveillance on the outside of their property.
Any questions regarding this?
I have one quick question. So my only concern is we're looking at at things that have three or more units. Is that right? My only concern is um how much of a financial burden is this on small landlords? So landlords who own, I I mean, I guess it wouldn't count for the two-deckers, but how many apartment buildings do we have in which you've got three apartments, but it's just a mom-and-pop landlord kind of situation? How expensive is this kind of thing? That's my only, in general, I think it's a fine idea. I'm not sure how big the apartment building should have to be because of that question about financial burden on the landlord. So.
That's why we're gonna put it in committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, go go go.
Of course. My feeling on it too is, you know, um who is going to monitor this? Who's going to make sure that this is something that's being implemented, and what are the repercussions if they don't follow? Um, are we going to just take out of business all of these um multi-dwelling units that are currently there and can't afford it? So I I think it needs a lot more discussion, but I do like the idea quite a bit.
You know, I think that when I've talked to the, when I've talked to the police department and others, um, the the type of cameras and stuff, you know, while while it may seem like a burden, um, the type of cameras are not uh uh too overburdened um for the landlord, given the price range that the police is willing to to uh um that they've showed. Now, the the other thing I will mention, though, is, I mean, security is a huge, a huge thing to be done, and I think it is not to disenfranchise. Um, I I don't know if you call them mom-and-pop landlords with the two of the units. I think there's some wiggle room there. But it is it is to talk about the issues that we have at a lot of these apartments in the city where there's no cameras and we have shootings on property. The police are going there four or five times in a week, and and you can't get any cooperation from the people. We need to have cameras, and if these and if these um uh multiple dwelling units won't do it on their own, we need to require them as a city to do it. And so whether that means three or four, whether it means four or five, whatever the the, you know, we can address the language to be more defined, who has to put these cameras out, but I think we need to do it. So but.
Great.
In 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 committee anyway, in Public Safety.
Thank you for bringing this topic out so that we can discuss it, and and I think that the judge will review this. I know this was kind of last minute, and I I think that he should go over it, too, and then we should have a committee meeting on it and kind of refine it. So, thank you so much. Uh, with that being said, the we are going to adjourn the pre-calcus caucus meeting? Is there a second?
Mike, yeah, we second. Michael, we staying on the same line, or is there another email for the different meeting?
Same line.
Same line? Okay. What when we, are we gonna start in ten minutes, or how would you like to work it?
I know he lost power, so give it a minute until he gets back on. I know it's blank now.
Okay. His computer just crashed. This is the clerk. Um, he's he's gonna be getting on in just a moment.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, so everybody just hold tight, and what we'll do is is we will reconvene at uh eight after seven, and uh.
Can I ask, can I ask Councilor, can I ask Councilor Hart, not my question, in this moment? Can you hear me? I hope you can hear me.
We had a second.
Second, it is 7:12. We're going to call this meeting of the City of Utica Common Council to order. Just got the notification we're live, so we're all set. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
McNeil, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice, Williamson, Lamedico, DeBrengo, Galini, all present.
Thank you. Before we say the pledge, I just want to note that we will be voting by roll call and moving through the order. All right, we're going to begin this meeting by pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence this evening is going to be dedicated to councilperson Lamedico who has just had a death in the family. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business this evening is the minutes. They have been posted. They are actually shared on the screen right now. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the minutes or do we want to go through them?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from, who was the second? Just state your name, please. Thank you. Any opposed? For this one, I'll do any opposed. Okay, we did kind of go through the minutes anyhow. They're on the screen. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move through the agenda a bit differently since we are remote today, so why don't we start with the department heads this evening? Fire Chief Ingersoll, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'd just like to address something that the fire department's been dealing with. We have had several members test positive for COVID. We were able to isolate. They're all feeling better. They're in the process of recovery. We got a couple that are going to be released in the next few days and are going to be able to return to work. I think this just demonstrates how COVID continues to impact the fire department, public safety in the city, and it really shows how essential our firefighters are to the general well-being of the public. And it's something we need to deal with. We're seeing these rates skyrocket in the county daily. There was another 140. Again, our firefighters, paramedics, police officers, we're all seeing this and dealing with it on a firsthand basis. I just like the call for continuing to show up to work and...
Chief Ingersoll, I believe we lost you. Can you hear us?
I can now.
Ah, you were just thanking everyone for continuing to come to work, et cetera, if you wanted to start from where you left off.
I'm sorry, Mike. I didn't hear you.
I was just mentioning where you had left off. We lost you at thanking all those who continue to come to work during this time, et cetera.
Yeah, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the report. Corvusian Council, Ms. Hartnett, would you like the floor for a report?
I do not have anything to report. Thank you, President Galini.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thomas, I believe you dialed in. Anything? Commissioner Thomas? Okay. Well, those are all the department heads we have this evening. Oh, is that Commissioner Thomas?
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Ah!
Mr. President?
Yes, Deputy Chief Noonan. You jumped in. All right, great. You have the floor. Hello?
This is Captain Sequway representing the Police Department for Deputy Chief Noonan.
Oh, there you go. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for dialing in. That's, we were going back and forth in text trying to get Deputy Chief on, so thank you, Captain, for that. All right, so that wraps up the department heads. We're going to move right into cash reports, miscellaneous reports, et cetera. Clerk, do we have anything this evening?
We do not have anything. Thank you.
Okay, then the next order of business, since there are no public hearings this evening, I would like to just note that our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is the fifteenth, or yes, the 15th of December, is the public hearing for the zoning code. We've been discussing this for quite some time, so...
Sixteen.
Sixteen. It's fourteen. It is the sixteenth. I apologize. Yes, fourteen plus two is sixteen. Sorry about that, the sixteenth. Point being, if you have any constituents that have been asking about that, please remind them as they can be connected into the meeting and speak to the council live or present communications to the clerk, and they can be read officially into the record. Thank you. And that's at our next regularly scheduled meeting. All right, so remonstrances, appeals, and any legislation from the floor. I'm going to go to first...
I have a point of order, Mr. President.
Okay, you have the floor, Councilman Moody?
Yes. Is it possible for us to make a motion whereby which we can dispense our normal setting of legislation and consider the legislation in a particular order tonight?
Would you like to make the motion? I suppose that's what you're asking. Yes, make the motion.
I do make a motion that we dispense the normal order and consider legislation in a particular fashion. I would like to consider Councilman Beatrice's legislation prior to the Local Law Number Six that is being presented tonight.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, we have a second from Friend. We're going to do a roll call vote on that. McNeil?
No.
Burmaster?
No.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
No.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson? Williamson? You almost came off mute. Williamson?
I said no, no, no.
All right, there's a no. All right, Lamedico?
No.
DeBrengo?
No.
Okay, so that is seven nays defeated. Okay, is there anything else, Councilman Moody, before I...
I conclude my point of order.
Thank you very much. First District Majority Leader and Councilperson Maria McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I had one thing. I just wanted to remind everybody as our numbers rise to just be safe. I know everyone's smart and they make smart decisions, but just be a little extra cautious going forward that we, that we can keep our numbers in the area as low as we possibly can. I know this beast has a mind of its own, and I just hope the best for our area. That is all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. District Two, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate that it's a tough time of year going into Christmas, right after Thanksgiving. Mental health, emotions are probably at the worst. The virus isn't helping. Just reach out to your friends, reach out to your family, assure them that we're going to get through this. They need help. There's agencies out there, and just be safe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Third District, Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Am I muted or unmuted? Okay, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. First, I would like to commend the Utica Youth Council. I sat in on their meeting yesterday. They're doing really good work. They're actually in the middle of a drive for personal care products. They are collecting them for Evelyn's House, which I'm sure everybody knows is a house, a home for young mothers and their babies, and they're very much in need of certain kinds of personal care products, and so they're working on this. I have forwarded to the clerk an email from them and asked her to forward it to each of the members of the council so that we can all do our parts to sort of help to promote this, this drive that they're doing. So it's, it's really terrific, and I commend them for it, and I would also very much encourage all of my colleagues to reach out to the young people in your ward who are on the youth council, get to know them, encourage them, help them to do their great work. So with that, I would like to pull from committee the legislation that we discussed, my local law that we discussed at the last meeting. I would like to make two changes to it. I would like to get it back to where it was originally. The two changes I would like to, which was my original intent, as we discussed last time. The first is that I would like to make the effective date of this legislation to be January 1 of 2021. And then the other is a pretty seemingly minor, but maybe it would be important change, which is that in the last paragraph, I would like to change the word "person" to "any elected official." And with those two changes that I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to lay this on the table.
All right, so you're making a motion to pull this from committee. Is there a second? Councilman Moody, was that, I saw you come off mute. Was that a second?
One second, and let's vote it all however we're going to vote. Yes, second.
All right, so quick roll call vote for pulling this out of committee. McNeil?
No.
Burmaster?
No.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
No.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice? Beatrice?
I'm sorry, no.
Williamson?
No.
Lamedico?
Negative.
DeBrengo?
No.
All right, so that was seven nays defeated. This is staying in committee. Councilperson Friend, do you have anything else this evening for remonstrances?
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Miola and President Pro Temp, you have the floor, Fourth District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to inform my colleagues about a legislator who was our mayor, Tim Julian. He worked diligently today with the budget for United County Budget today. He, what happened in United County Budget, of course, most of us know, there was a removal of the money allocated for our codes guys. It was $288,000. Legislator Julian was able to find the money within the budget and was able to have a very, very good amendment to the budget, but it fell on deaf ears, and only people who really listened to it were the people of the City of Utica. But at this time, the county buzz budget does not offer us the $288,000 that they yearly give us for our codes officers. So when you do see Tim out there on the streets, would you please thank him for trying to change that? Next thing, Mr. President, according to Local Law procedures, I would like to have Local Law Number Six set on the table for seven days. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to read it into the record.
All right, so there's a motion to introduce and lay on the table Local Law Number Six. You can read, is there a, let's read it out for the second, of course. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All right, so Burmaster with the second. Councilman Miola, please read, and it is on the screen for everyone to see.
Thank you, Mr. President. Legislation Number Six, Amending Local Law, Section Two, Period 023, sponsored by Councilman Miola, Councilman Burmaster, Councilwoman McNeil, Councilman Lamedico, and Councilman DeBrengo. Being enacted by the Common Council for the City of Utica as follows. Section Two dot 023, the City of Utica shall read as follows. Any mayor, president of the council, or comptroller elected as such to consecutive terms shall be ineligible to be reelected to the same office for a term of office next following the end of the second consecutive term of office for which he or, it should be he or she, he was elected. Any, number two, any elected official with a term of office of two years elected as such for a four consecutive term shall be ineligible to be elected to the same office for a term next following the end of the fourth consecutive term of office for which he or she was elected. Number three, a person who served the maximum consecutive terms for mayor, comptroller, president of the common council, or member of the common council shall seek the same office again after one term has elapsed. Section Two, the local law shall not apply to those elected officials who were, as amended by Mr. DeBrengo, elected and their terms extended pursuant to Local Law Number Two of 2017 who shall continue to be governed by Local Law Number Two of 2017. This local law shall take effect January 1, 2022.
Okay, so the motion was to introduce and lay on the table, so I'm going to take a roll call vote.
I have a point of inquiry about this. I'm sorry, I've just not seen it.
Okay.
If, if the, if they're already grandfathered in, why are we making it effective January 1, 2022? Why can it be effective now?
It's a good point. Councilman Miola, you, oh, I'm going to, I'm going to have this addressed to Councilman Miola. He is the person who made the motion introducing and laying the table. Councilman Miola?
Councilman, basically, it's, we are running in 2021. To grandfather it in is just for exactly the people who are running in different terms. it in is just for exactly the people who are running in different terms, as I stated in our caucus meeting. So it'll be a moot point to either write it in 2021 or 22. But seeing how we're all going to run for election in 2021, which is basically, uh, under a month away, the election date, which will start the whole, um, law would be January of 2022.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm done with the point if, if that's the explanation, but I, I, to me, it seems that it could be effect, I mean, that you're, that you could make the argument it could be effective now if they're already grandfathered in, right? If it's a local law, um, shouldn't, does not apply to those officials that were elected in the terms extended pursuant to local law two in 2017, that they can continue to do that and be governed by, um, that, then they could have an effective date for now. I'm just saying, if you're gonna lay it on the table in this final form, um, that's just the point that I had to bring up. At least just a thought that I had.
Councilman Miola, I'm gonna ask you a question that's procedural here to try and, uh, sort out the question Councilman Moody is asking. Um, given the entire conversation, um, the people presented who sponsored this in the pre-meeting caucus, is section three necessary, given that section two exists?
Basically, every law, Mr. President, needs a starting date.
Right.
And this law needs a starting date. Any local law sir needs a starting date, and that's one of the processes of, within the general municipal.
Oh, okay, I guess I, I, I rephrased it wrong. That, I completely understand. It has to have a start date. Um, Councilman Moody, um, is your question whether this should be effective quote immediately, 2021, 2022? Like what, uh, can you, can you phrase that so we can go on with that?
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it was just to, to say that it's effective immediately if everybody was already grandfathered in. It seemed like it's kinda, I guess, trying to, um, go over, go over it twice. If there, if folks are already grandfathered in, then to start it late, I guess my question would be, why are they still grandfathered in to, to this, to this law if we're starting in 2022? Like, that seemed to be like a back date, and, and legally, I was trying to figure out, would, would, would it, would it impact, um, people from running if the effective date is 2022? But I don't wanna
So I guess that's a question for Judge Garamone.
I don't wanna make it a mountain because it's not gonna change my vote, so I'm not trying to make it a mountain. I'm just trying to understand the legislation.
Yeah, uh, perfect, perfect point, uh, Majority Leader. Uh, Judge Garamone, uh, Special Counsel, can you answer that regarding 2022 and section two combined?
I think during the committee meeting, you understood that, uh, there are people who are, uh, would be affected this law if it didn't start January 1st of 22 and were applied in 21. And the people who sponsored this law, uh, know that. There are at least the three people, as I said, maybe four people affected by the starting date. So I, I think that's pretty clear, and they didn't want to disenfranchise those people. I think that was very clear. And that's why the starting date is 22 rather than 21. All of you are going to be eligible to run in 21. And, uh,
So just to make it clear, no one is grandfathered in, correct?
If it starts in 22, the people who ran in 19, uh, have the same, uh, terms, obviously, uh, that they, uh, previously were given, and the people who were, uh, elected in 19 have the terms that existed then. And the people who run in, uh, the next election, which would be 23, 23 for council, because you've already run in 21, uh, they will have different terms. And, uh, this gives, this gives, this, this council, oh, actually has the same benefit as pretty much the last council. And what the council does in 2022, whoever they are, who knows? But I, I just, I'm just saying that this council, at least the majority thereof who are sponsoring this, this is how they feel the law should be. And they in fact put in what looks like a grandfather clause or something, and, uh, if that's what they want, and that's what they think is fair to the people who ran thinking they were having this term, that's what's gonna be the result.
Okay.
So, I mean, if Councilman Moody, if Miss Councilman Moody wants to,
I think he's, he's trying to rephrase what he's saying.
It's time to vote. Vote, go, or make a motion to amend it, see if anybody agrees with it.
Uh, my, 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 my next question is, if this is effective in January 1, 2022, and someone runs in 21, could an argument be made that if I was elected prior to the effective date of this law, if I was elected, um, could, would I then be eligible for a 12-year term? So if I'm newly elected to the council, and this law is not yet in effect, would I have a 12-year term if, if I am elected next time? Because that's also the argument that we've made, that, you know, they still have to run again. Let's say those persons are not reelected, a new council person is elected, would they then have 12 years because this date is effective in 22 as opposed to now?
Judge Garamone, do you follow? Because this, the effective date is 2022, and everyone's running for reelection next year.
Councilman Moody and everybody on this council will be running. Uh, is Councilman Moody, I can't tell. Did they, was there a question to me?
Yes. The, the question was, so here, let me restate the question. Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
What are they running for? In 21, they're running for the, uh, the, uh, term that is set. And in 23, they'll be running for a different term. So they'll be affecting, uh, the council after this about what they're gonna be running to. So if you win in 21, uh, in 22, 23, if you run, you're running for a different term. And it also afforded certain people, like the comptroller, Councilman Williamson, Councilman LaMedico, Councilman McNeil, to run under the terms that they thought they were running on in 2019. That's very simple. That's what it does. And that was the intent of the five people who sponsored that. That's, that's my correct. Mr. Miola, you're the sponsor.
Yes.
Okay, that's what, uh,
I, I, Council, Judge Garamone, please, please let me ask, um, I need to rephrase because that doesn't answer the full question. The question is,
What am I missing? What am I missing?
Well, let me rephrase, and if you, and if you've missed nothing, just so you've missed no, nothing. Uh, Councilman Moody's question was, if he is reelected in the 2021 election next year, will he also be governed by the 12-year term under this clause?
And, and, and not just me, but not me.
Yes, he will. Yes, he will.
All right, then there's your, there's your answer, Councilman Moody.
Mr. Moody is not the only, the people who have been extended.
Yes.
Mr. Moody is also, uh, under that law. Ms. Friend would be under that law.
Yes.
And Mr. Beatrice would be under that law. They got the term, they got the term that was before the people in 2019 election.
All right.
And they will have that term until that expires.
All right, I just wanted to ensure that,
That was the purpose of it, not to disenfranchise. You know, what you just asked me a question for everybody to talk.
All right, hang on, hang on, Councilperson.
This is a non-disenfranchising statute. That's what it is. It didn't just affect a few people, it affected all of you. You all had that term. However, in 23, you don't because this council took it away from you. And that is when the change, uh, takes place.
Okay.
To disenfranchise, to, to disenfranchise people who just got elected two years ago, actually a year ago. They're not doing that. They're giving them the same, uh, same opportunities the other one gained. And that's because it's, the 2017 law became effective in the 2019 election and was important. It's not important in 2021 election, it's important in 2023 election. So you make the starting date 22, it, uh, it doesn't disenfranchise anybody, doesn't franchise any of the councilmen who are sitting there. So,
All right, thank you.
You got more term, Mr. Moody, Councilman Beatrice, and Councilman Friend.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Judge. I just, I just, before we wrap it up, Councilman Moody, does that, uh, finalize the answer for your question before I go to, uh?
No, no, because I'm asking, I'm asking, can a legal argument be made? Not if I'm reelected, because I'm serving on the council now, but let's say a new person, uh, 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 Joe Schmo is running, right? Um, um, or, or Mrs. Watermelon is running down the street, and she, or he wins an election in 2021, a new council person, not a reelection, a new council person, can they make a legal argument, given the effective date, that they should have 12 years? That's the argument that I'm, that, that, that I'm trying to get to. Not reelection, but if a new person, brand new council person wins in 2021, can they make the legal argument against the city that they can, should be able to have 12 years because this is effective in 2022?
I believe the answer to your question is no, because they weren't elected pursuant to the 2017, um, local law. Thank you.
I, I have to say, I, are you sure they aren't? Because this isn't effective until 2022. So section two also isn't effective until 2022. So I think the councilperson makes a point.
So I have to,
Councilperson, hang on though, hang on. What I wanted to do though is go to the Majority Leader, you, unless you don't require the floor anymore, you did request it, uh?
I was just trying to reiterate the same thing that Councilmember Moody was saying. That was the question that was being asked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then Councilman Miola?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, it changes when the new elected person becomes elected. That term is now eight years, period. Because the next time they run, it'll be in 2023, and the law changed in 2022. So the new elected person after January of 222, no matter if you're standing or sitting, you only have eight years to serve.
All right, now I have to ask a question because to, to Councilman Moody's point, section two, none of this local law is effective until January 1st, 2022. So it is a valid point that everyone running, um, next year is run, even if this passed seven days from now, okay, because let's say it lays on the table, uh, it doesn't, it's not effective until 2022. It's not effective until after the election. So all of the people that potentially are elected for the council next year are not affected by this because it isn't affected into, effective until 2022.
That's not true.
Amendment to say 2020.
President, that is not true.
Okay, all right.
That's it. The, the effective date for the election of councilmen and the change of terms is really 2023. So it may no difference if you put January 1st of 22, or you put January 1st of 22, 23, because really, the only election in between is next November. They're not affected there in, in, in November. When they run in 23, because the law kicked in January 1st of 22, they, that's when this, the councilmen who run that will only have two terms, uh, of, I mean, they have four terms, so two years, the, the mayor of the city of Utica will only have two terms of four, comptroller, president of the common council. That's where the law kicks in because, uh, that's the natural way of doing things. And it didn't, and all the people who may be adversely affected are no longer adversely affected. Uh, everybody's got what they want. And so, uh, the, uh, the law, when you get elected next year, the term you got elected to still allows you to run again because none of you people expire. But in 23, when you run again, decide to run again, maybe for the third time, if your friend, Beatrice, or, uh, you, Moody, you're running for a, uh, two-year, uh, you have a maximum two-year term.
All right, so, uh, Judge, thank you very much, because I just wanted to vet this back and forth to make sure everyone's absolutely certain. Councilman Moody, um, this does, uh, in section two, it does say reelected. So I think we should defer to the judge here. Um, you know, section two says reelected, so no people running for their first election next year are quote, "reelected." Um, so,
But, um, Councilman DeBrango made an amendment to say elected.
No, no amendments have been made to this. That was a committee meeting, so, um, yeah, yeah.
But I think it might,
I explained it, so I'm okay with reelected.
Yes, Mr. President, stop interpreting the law other than what the law is.
I am, I am trying to share questions back and forth.
The law is effective January 1st of 22. That means the post-elections, post-elections from 22, as far as all of these elected officials, pretty much, is 23. Now, Charlie Brown said to me, why didn't you make it January 1st of 23?
Judge Garamone, Judge Garamone, hold, hold, Judge Garamone, I'm not arguing with you. I am not interpreting the law. I'm trying to ensure that Councilman Moody's questions are final before we move to a vote. That's what I'm trying to go to here. Um, I, I said, we are, I already, I already stated we're deferring to the judge. I said that. I said that before we, uh, before Council, uh, handed the floor back to Councilman Moody. Um, so we are deferring to your expla, or I'm, I'm requesting that we defer to your explanation here. You are the special counsel. Uh, Councilman, so Councilman Moody, um, uh, what, at this point, you need to either make a motion, or we need to, uh, just ask if the debate is over and move this to a vote, uh, to lay on the table?
I, I'm, um, um, as, as people already know, I'm not voting for the grandfather again, but I do think feel, and I don't know how the, my colleagues are gonna vote, but I do think that my colleagues are gonna pass this particular law. And so, um, I would like to make the motion to amend it to say January 1, 2020, I mean, um, 2021, um, because the elected folks are already elect, would be, um, uh, kinda in this and covered with section two. So that'd be my recommendation if,
All right, so your motion, your, your motion's in order. Uh, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second that.
All right, so roll call vote on this motion. Uh, the motion is to, um, amend section three to reflect January 1st, 2021. McNeil.
No.
Burmaster.
No.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
No.
Moody. Moody.
Yes.
Um, Beatrice.
No.
Williamson.
No.
LaMedico.
No.
DeBrango.
No.
All right, it's seven nays, uh, that's defeated. Uh, at this time, we are going to bring the motion to introduce and lay on the table to a vote. Um, roll call vote.
Can I, can I just ask just a point of information?
Yes.
Just a point of information. It still reads, were, who were reelected, right? In the last section two, reelected, not elected, that we never made an actual motion for that, correct?
No, there was no emotion, there was no motion. It was read into the record as it is, as it's, it's shown on the screen. Uh, that was a pre-meeting conference. Okay, so there's, you, you have no motion at this time?
No.
Okay, it's this,
That was DeBrango's, if he wants to change it,
No, he already, he already stated that, uh, he, he is not going to, um,
Okay.
A few moments ago. All right, so roll call vote to introduce and lay on the table of the common council. McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes, yes.
Friend.
No.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
No.
Beatrice.
No.
Williamson.
Yes.
LaMedico.
Yay.
DeBrango.
Yay.
All right. Six yays, this introductory to local law, actually, um, th, this is now on the table. Um, question, Judge Garamone, does this have to reflect for the clerk's, uh, introductory to local law number, uh, five at this point? Because it is the first one that was introduced and laid on the table.
This one is already on the table. Uh, you, if you wish to vote on, on the other
Should this one be six, or should this be changed to number five?
Number five, uh, which one? That Councilman Friends? Number five, uh, which one, that Councilman Friends?
Right, well, well, let's, let's ignore that. This, this has now been laid on the table. My question is, uh, for the clerks, does this have to reflect number five? Because it is on the table, in, in the order of precedence for certification. I suppose we could take care of that after, I could give you a ring after the meeting. Uh, it's, 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 it's just, uh, the bill-jacking material.
President Colini, the introductory numbering is more just for organizational sake.
Yeah, that's my point, yeah, yeah, so we're good. It's just bill-jack material. All right. So this is on the table. Um, Councilman Miola, you have the floor again for, uh, for justices and appeals.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for doing a well-done job, I'm all set, thank you.
Thanks very much. Fifth district, Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Um, uh, well, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I hope, I agree with the majority leader, uh, councilperson, um, that we should continue to make sure that we're wearing our masks, make sure that we're, um, doing all that we can to kind of, uh, keep ourselves safe, but health, COVID is rising up again across this nation, and particularly in Oneida County in Utica, and I want to make sure that everyone is safe. Um, I want to mention the fact in our district, um, in Cornhill, there was a drive-by shooting, um, yesterday, and, um, uh, and I've talked to the chief police about that. I've introduced an ordinance that would require, um, and that looks into requiring video surveillance cameras for, uh, these types of apartment buildings and, and multi, uh, multiple dwelling apartments. And so, um, I'm going to make the motion to place that into the public safety, um, committee.
Okay, so there's a motion to introduce and commit ordinance to require video surveillance for multiple dwelling apartments. Do you want to summarize the legislation? Um, we did go over it at length.
Yes, the, the legislation would simply require owners or landlords of multiple dwelling units, um, in the city of Utica, um, to, uh, provide, install, and maintain surveillance cameras, um, that will be deemed appropriate or accepted by the Utica Police Department. And so, um, we're going to talk about the parameters of what a multi-dwelling is, and look at how best to, um, uh, increase security without, uh, damaging or, or, um, putting an extreme burden on landlords.
It's a very good piece of legislation there, Delvin, and I'll back you up on that.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to go, is there a second? We need, or LaMedico, do you want to second that? Yeah, okay, great. LaMedico's the second. Uh, roll call vote placing this in committee. Um, McNeil?
Yes.
Burr Master?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
No, no, I'm just kidding, it was LaMedico.
Come on, Delvin, get on the stick.
All right, I'm going to move on. Okay, thank you, thank you. I figured you were a yes, but I couldn't. All right, Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Yes.
DeBrango?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. It's in committee, and it's in the public safety committee of the whole select committee. Thank you. Uh, Moody, do you have anything else this evening?
Good, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Sixth district, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Okay. So, Mr. President, let me just ask you a question now. My legislation, uh, I know it was voted out of the rules of order, but can I bring my legislation out still?
Yes, yes, that was just a motion to change the rules of order. So if you'd like to make, make a motion to introduce your legislation, you can.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to enter, uh, introduce my legislation. Is it possible to have you or the clerk read it? Because I'm on the computer here, and I can't really see it real good to read it.
Yeah.
Would, would that be possible?
I'd like to second it.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to read it for Councilman.
No, I don't want, no, 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 no.
Hold, hold, hold on, hold on.
I would like the clerk, I would like the clerk to read it.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. And who's the second on that?
Me, Mark.
Williamson, thank you. All right, Williamson's the second clerk. Can you please read?
In local law amending Section two point zero two-three D of the Utica City Charter introductory local law number seven of two thousand and twenty, the enacted with the common council for the city of Utica, Section One subdivision, D, Section two point zero two-three D of the Utica City Charter shall read as follows. Consecutive terms. One, any mayor, president of the common council, or comptroller elected as such for two consecutive terms shall be ineligible to be elected to the same office for a term of office next following the end of the second consecutive term of office for which he or she was elected. Two, any other elected official with a term of office of two years elected as such for four consecutive terms shall be ineligible to be elected to the same office for a term next following the end of the fourth consecutive term of office for which he or she was elected. The effective date of this local law shall be January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
May I make one statement before? So I just want to, I just want to reiterate that this legislation is the legislation that I was going to be bringing out in February. It is the legislation I started from day one, and I just wanted, as we're going through this, I wanted to make sure that I put my thoughts out on the table. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. So this is seconded, uh, the introduction, and was your motion to introduce and lay on the table? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So that, that is, and that is what, uh, Councilman Williamson seconded. Um, roll call vote. McNeil?
No.
Burr Master?
No.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
No.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
No.
DeBrango?
No.
All right. Uh, there was only four yays, so that motion is defeated. All right. Anything else? Uh, Councilman Beatrice?
No, no, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Williamson, uh, and minority leader, you have the floor.
I have nothing to pass tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman LaMedico, uh, you do have the floor.
I'd just like to thank everybody for the thoughts and prayers that I received over this week, and, uh, you know, I really appreciate it. Uh, other than that, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you, and, uh, all of our condolences. We're very sorry. Thank you. Uh, Councilman DeBrango, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, first and foremost, my condolences to the LaMedico family. Uh, my prayers are with you, and I'm sure every council member, uh, reiterates the same. Uh, as far as these, uh, local laws, um, regarding the, uh, the term limits, I think we're all on board, trying to get it back to eight years. I know that, I know in my heart that I would like it to go, you know, to a public referendum, but I think that may be impossible. So I think, uh, by us supporting one or the other, I think Councilman Beatrice, Council, Councilwoman Friend, I think you got what you wanted on your end, I think you got, you got it back to eight years. I think everybody agrees on that. There are little, you know, uh, there are some changes in it, but I think it does level the playing field. I think it, I think it's, it's good for both sides, whether Republican, Democrat, doesn't matter. Uh, the people elected us in two thousand and nineteen, uh, under the current, uh, terms of up to, uh, you know, s- six, six terms for councilpersons, for the president and, uh, the mayor and the comptroller. So, uh, I, I think we're, we're all on the same page, I think we're going to accomplish something, um, uh, I hope, hopefully this will pass next time around. And, um, I think it benefits both, uh, pro and con against term limits, so that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I got, uh, two quick things. Um, the first thing is related to the codes money as well. Um, Councilman Miola, uh, thank you for pointing that out, um, especially, uh, with the work that, uh, legislator Julian was doing. Uh, what I wanted to mention about this is that the codes money has come up, and it's been, uh, you know, contentious prior, uh, it's been in and out, you know, whether, uh, the city of Utica is going to receive this codes money, that, um, you know, overall, you know, Utica is part of, part of the county, that's why that, that is, uh, routed to our budget, because a lot of the codes work we do is due to, uh, services rendered under the county, et cetera. Um, what I wanted to do is to put some math behind it. It's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, in the city of Utica's budget, where our overall full budget is just under eighty million dollars. Um, it is a much larger percentage to us than it is to the county. I understand that, um, in the times of COVID, et cetera, we are all cutting, uh, the city, we've done a lot of work, starting from March, uh, through the Board of E and A, a lot of us have, uh, done different work to, uh, work with the different board members to cut back on things and do, um, you know, different types of, um, incentives for people to retire early, so that rather than having to lay people off, we could, um, you know, have natural attrition in the workforce, and lower our, um, our liabilities financially that way. But to the county, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is point zero seven percent, point zero seven percent of the four hundred and thirty million dollar budget. Uh, so I, I wanted to just put some math behind that, because it's, it's really, um, to, to the county, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a much smaller, uh, issue than it is to the city, and now we are going to have to figure out how to consume that. Um, the next thing is COVID. Um, a lot of us have mentioned, you know, with our numbers going up, um, you know, wear masks, uh, make sure you social distance, et cetera, something that I really think needs to be proliferated much more is if you're sick, stay home. Uh, I don't mean if you think you don't have COVID, uh, you can go out. I mean, if, if you don't feel well, and I know some of us did this tonight, that's why we're doing the meeting responsibly the way we're doing it tonight. Uh, if, if you're concerned that you might have a cold, and it might not be a cold, stay home. Don't, uh, potentially expose people. Uh, and I'd like to thank, uh, the people on the council and in city hall who have been doing this, uh, to make sure that we all can continue to function. So that's all I have this evening. Is there anything else from the floor before we have that magical motion at the end of the meeting? All right. I can't call it. Is there a motion?
I'd like to go.
Okay. I believe, uh, there was Friend and DeBrango potentially, does someone want to second that?
Second.
McNeil?
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, this meeting is concluded. Thank you all for, uh, sticking on the session through the technical difficulties and paying attention to the meeting. Thank you.